Great, thank you very much. So I already sent an email, but this meeting, I made it for just one hour because we've been doing this a lot by now and this is fourth one doing this. So I think one hour should be enough, I thought. And if it's not, we can always email each other and contact each other outside of the meeting. So I'm gonna try to be patient as much as possible. So today's agenda is really simple. I'm not sure you had a chance to take a look at the Google document I shared with you all and I'm gonna just go over with anyway because it's on the record, so it's important to be put on the record, so I'm gonna go over. My focus today is more for sound amplification rules because I heard some voices saying that the vendors' rules need to be discussed within the vendors, like art vendors more, so I respect that. So like, I think vendors want to discuss among vendors before suggesting something from them. So I'm gonna go over the my suggestion from the performers. And basically, I wanna hear any updates from each organization, if you have any, and the comments about the suggestions or about the sound amplification rule. And I think this question is mainly for Max, but now we would like to really know what's the actual next step to bring it up to public hearing or, you know, bring up to park commissioner who writes the actual park rules so that we can make this change happen. And so, you know, because like, we can't talk things here over and over, just it needs to be brought up to the next level, I feel like. So that's pretty much it for today. So I'm gonna share the Google Doc for now. This time, the technical thing should be way better because I changed the computer. Hope you hear me and see the share screen at the same time. Is it everything okay?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. So I already shared with you all, but so this is basically our suggestions, which I have been explaining over and over. So our suggestion is modify the rules from no sound down to allowing the sound amplification from nine AM to ten PM in eighty decibels. And this is just a quote from the current park rules saying, "No person shall play or operate any sound reproduction devices" as defined in this number in any park without a permit. And again, this permit quotes seventy dollars technically, this is only for like one day event and twenty-five dollars for even permit forty-five dollars for sound permit, in total seventy dollars, which is just not affordable for baskers who performs daily. And also this part I wanted to, like, I'm not really like sure what this means. This paragraph shall not apply to the regular and customary use of sound reproduction devices operated in full accordance with this rule, so as not unreasonably to disturb other persons in their permitted uses of the park. So I guess my question is, did this sentence cannot be the sentence to allow us to, you know, use the reasonable amount of decibels from the speaker? That's my question, but I guess not from what I'm seeing the enforcement happening in the park, but I just wanted to underline. And another section saying that so sound reproduction device definition includes but is not limited to any radio receiver, phonograph, television receiver, amplified musical instrument, portable speaker, tape recorder, cassette or disc player, speaker device or system, and any sound amplifier. And another section says, "No person shall play or operate any musical instrument between the hours of ten, uh, ten PM and eight AM." So from ten PM and eight AM, it's prohibited to play any musical instrument, but in other words, the acoustic musical instruments are allowed to be played from eight AM to ten PM, technically, even if it is a set of drums, which is a hundred twenty decibels, for example. I'm just giving an example. That's just the current rules. So that's our suggestions. And here's just reasons why we think it is reasonable suggestions. So this is the citation from WHO website. And this is a quote. So they say, "You can safely listen to a sound level of eighty decibels for up to forty hours a week. If the sound level is ninety decibels, the safe listening time reduces for to four hours per week." So depending on the decibel level, the hours change, but this is what they generally state here. And then, so this is just a chart of the decibel levels. And normal conversation is about sixty decibels and eighty decibels is the amount of the decibels we're suggesting. And heavy traffic on the street and road is eighty-five decibels. And I highlight it because this is already like louder than our suggestion. So our suggestion eighty decibel is quieter than the heavy traffic going happening on the street daily basis. And in ninety decibels, this is the level of shouted conversation. Again, this is louder than our suggestion. So our suggestion is quieter than shouted conversation. Just giving you a general idea why it's reasonable, we think. And also another thing here, MTA rule. So in case you didn't know, baskers do not need any permits to play in any MTA transit system. I know there are programs saying, you know, like musicians have this flag behind them usually. And they go through the auditions and they perform there for the set amount of timeframe. But even without that program, we can perform in MTA transit system. So this is a quote, "The MTA is proud to support and promote the arts and musical performances. Any musician is welcome to perform in New York City subway system as long as they follow the transit rules." And here the rules. So they say, "On subway platforms, musicians are not permitted to use amplification devices of any kind, electronic or otherwise." So this means as long as it is not on the subway platforms, meaning like hallway area or like a midtown area, like, you know, like in-between area, which is not the place where trains are coming indirectly. Baskers can use amplification devices actually, and we just have a right to do so according to the MTA rule. Also, they have the decibel amount rules. So the emission of any sound in excess of eighty-five dB A on weighted scale measured, et cetera, et cetera. And so seventy decibels measured two feet from the station booth is excessive noise and is prohibited. So if, as long as it's below that, they allow us to use sound amplification. And this is just a clear example showing that this bill regulations are possible to be set. Some people were probably concerning about how to, how to measure it, like who would measure it, is it possible or not? And the rule like this already exists. So as we know already, the department enforcement officer carries the specific designated equipment to measure the decibel amount. So I'm just saying that this is not something impossible because decibel will already exist in MTA. So that's pretty much it. And the vendors' rules, I'm not gonna go over yet because they are still in the conversation of deciding what they actually want to suggest, but we're trying to figure out the distance rules and how can we modify it. So we're gonna update about all of this, I think, in the next meeting, hopefully. By the next meeting, if art vendors could come up the clear suggestion, that would be wonderful. So yeah, pretty much it from me. Great. So if you have any updates from your side, I would like to know. And also, you can comment about the suggestion I just shared already, and it's important for me to know how it sounds like from your perspective. So I think, Trevor, I know you're sick, but like, do you think you can speak a little bit?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we're, we're open to trying to figure out what the regulation should be in Washington Square Park, kind of given its layout. And I know that's some of the vending pieces of feedback. We're open to changing regulations generally. We're, we're not experts or historians on the regulations themselves, so I think one of the things we'd like to understand is like, why some of these regulations are in place. So for example, you know, what's the consequence of changing the regulations if we go to eighty decibels? What is the consequence of umbrellas, right? And on one hand, I, I think of all of you, you know, you know, burning up in the sun, and I'm like, that, that's not right. On the other hand, there's a reason that regulation was put in place over some fear of, you know, I'm sure that umbrellas proliferate everywhere and then start blocking the, the park. And, and I'm not an expert in it. And, and maybe Mark, you know, from a CB2 perspective, I imagine you have a better sense of, you know, some of the regulations that are in place and why they're in place and some of the sensitivity there. As I said, we're, we're, we're here because we wanna listen about, you know, is there a better way? But if we were to make a recommendation, we wanna make sure it's measured and we consider both sides.
Thank you so much. I think the one thing about the sound amplification rules, like, i- if what I heard was correctly, it hasn't changed since like possibly ninety-seventies or something, when they had just a huge boombox and then and then that was the time they said, "No sound down." So technology is already developed and we have like the quieter, portable, like smaller speakers and then my understanding is the park rule is not aligned with the time and not catching up. That's what I'm understanding as of now, just because you mentioned about, you know, like there is of course the background why these rules like were set originally. So for specifically for the sound dump situation, I think that's the background, just letting you know. Thank you, Trevor. Great. Can I move on to Mark from CB2?
So before I start, it's been called to my attention that you know that my role here is mostly to listen and to report back. I may have been a little too subtle in that role in previous meetings when we're talking about enforcement. And I know this is a meeting that you wanna talk about your proposal. But I wanna make sure that I don't lose the opportunity to say that when I talk about how enforcement, first of all, that, that, that there is support for enforcement because of all the problems that everyone acknowledges in this park. And I have perhaps been too subtle in saying that park rules need to be there needs to be one set of rules for everybody, that you can't, you can talk about different uses within the park, but you can't have park rules that apply differently to different users, whether that is as a function of your status, what you're doing in the park and so forth. And so CB2 has general support for anyone who's enforcing the rules with the design to try to make the park safer, to try to make the park equitably useful and usable by everyone who's a park user. And if I have given a different impression than that, then that's on me. It is not on CB2. I see your hand, Robert. Let me just sort of get through a couple of things here. To the extent that the proposals that are being made are being made that would call for selective or different enforcement, that CB2 hasn't taken the position on these things because we will react to, our board will react to proposals as they're made and try not to prejudge, but a concern will always be whether it's enforcement or whether it's a change in the rules that treats two people who are in the park differently, just differentiating between users versus uses and the way that they use the park. Somebody mentioned something about the umbrella, so I might as well cover that. The history of that, as I understand it, and I'm new to this, is that the enforcement folks and virtually everybody needs to know and see what's going on in the park. Umbrellas, and because there are folks who may be appearing to be doing one kind of use, but in fact are engaging in a different kind of use, one of which may be permitted and one of which may not be. And so it may be the case that the umbrella is there to make sure that enforcement folks only take action when it's appropriate and they can only make the determination if they can see what's going on. So those are my answers to the first parts of the question with respect to the proposal. I have mentioned in the past that I don't read the WHO the same rules, the same way that you do. But this is just Mark Diller talking now and it's not CB2. So we will of course react to whatever proposals are made at the appropriate time with the preview that they need to treat the park, all park users essentially the same and address only uses. And I have a continuing concern about anything that tries to differentiate on things like differentiate in ways which that require equipment to, or discretion to determine whether or not someone's in compliance. If you have a rule, it's a, it's a kind of a precept that you need to be able to know and everybody else around you needs to be able to know whether you're in compliance with the rule or not. If you choose not to be in compliance, that's a whole different question. That's a whole different conversation. But you need to know and everybody else needs to know whether you're in compliance. And I've raised in these meetings before the problem that there's only one kind of sound meter that is usable for enforcement. And it is something that the DEP is generally involved with. I don't know how it works in, in the parks department. So so the fact that my cellphone or perhaps your cellphone has a decibel meter may be instructive to me, but it's not an enforcement tool and we need to make sure that whatever rules we put in place are enforceable and enforceable fairly and consistently against all people in the same way. I think that that's enough for right now. In terms of kind of preview or trying to be helpful in terms of as you approach the task of trying to change the rules. And CB2 doesn't, as far as I know, have any problem with folks engaging in a rulemaking process or trying to change rules to make them more equitable, more fair and more appropriate. And so that they would be enforced in much the same way. And we should reserve comment until such time as there's something actually finalized and proposed. And that would be a question for Max as much as anybody else to try to, to try to move that forward. I hope that that's a, I hope that the clarification is helpful. I apologize if I've been too subtle in the past. And I'm happy to, I'll be here for the rest of the meeting to try to talk about whatever it is that's useful. And I see Robert's hand, and if it's okay with Konami, I'll answer Robert.
Yeah, sure.
Can I speak, Konami?
Yeah.
Okay. First of all, the idea that all users of the park are treated the same is exactly the opposite of the reality. For different users, for virtually every single thing that we're talking about. So for example, while Konami cannot use amplification, every single concession, holiday market, special event, fashion show uses huge amplifiers. As far as umbrellas, every single concession vendor in every single park in New York City has an umbrella and does not get any kind of ticket for it. As far as vending, you're not allowed, the artists are not allowed to vend jewelry, clothing or crafts, and yet all the holiday markets in the parks are mostly vending jewelry, clothing and crafts. The artists have to be fifty feet from a monument. The concessions don't even have to be five inches from a monument. And as far as the purpose of the umbrella law, I've researched it. The concept of the umbrella law is that if people have umbrellas open, not that the police can't see what they're really doing, it's that pedestrians may not be able to have a good view of where they're walking. They might walk into an open manhole or like stores have these staircases that go down from the street into the basement. So theoretically, if you were a vendor, you were across from that basement, you had an umbrella open, somebody might fall into it. But the reality is that literally every single rule in the park rules is applied differently according to whether you're there under a permit, whether you're there under a concession, when you're there under a special event, or if you're there under the First Amendment. And the First Amendment vendors have the strictest and the most extensive restrictions, and the concessions have the fewest and the least restrictive concessions. I'm not gonna bore you with an entire list. I could go on for an hour just on the list of exceptions that the concessions don't have to follow, that the artists do have to follow.
I, I don't wanna make this a dialogue. The key, the key takeaway from what Robert just shared, and I have no reason to believe that with his long experience that there's anything but truth in it. But the key thing is the, the key word there is concession or permit. And with respect to amplified sound, there is absolutely no question that if you had a permit, you could use it. So the, the, as I understand it, the questions and the proposal being made has to do with whether or not a permit should be required. As right now it is. Or, well, no, right now it is. That's the, for amplified sound, that's the deal. By the way, that, that highlighted portion, Konami, that you read earlier about, I think they're talking about personal sound devices. The, the park rule seems to make an exception for, and it's, I agree that maybe it's not worded as clearly as it might be. But the idea is that if I'm lying on the grass and in, I'm gonna show my age, if I have a transistor radio next to my ear, that that is not the kind of amplified sound that they're talking about. But if I have a boombox, as you, the example you gave, again, showing my age, that that would be something that would require a permit depending on how loud it gets. So where exactly, you know, could the regulation be clearer? Sure. But I think that that's the intent of it. And the issue, as I see it, is one is the difference between what a concession, a concession is nothing but a multi-day formal permit. The difference is that I don't view people with concessions and permits as being on the same level as me in the park by myself.
And so Eric's here, go ahead.
Hello, everybody. I just wanted to say that the police do enforce transistor radios in the park as much as they do amplifiers. And that ties into what you're talking about, equal enforcement, right? So you assume that transistor radios should be okay in the park because that's common sense. It's a personal item. It doesn't take up space. But the police just view anything with a speaker as being amplified sound. So this is part of the entire issue, that there is an uneven level of enforcement based on some kind of escalating discretion at the hands of the police, that you think it's common sense for the transistor, but the police think that that is out of bounds. Likewise, the umbrellas have never been enforced in all the time that I've ever been in Washington Square Park. And it was only as a part of this crackdown, starting July fifteenth, that they actively started going after umbrellas. That is a brand new enforcement. Really, the thing about unequal enforcement is what's happening now is unequal to what had been happening just before earlier in the year. I also, Mark, I wanna be real clear. We, none of us involved in this action have anything against the enforcement personnel, whether it's parks or police. We believe that we support their mission wholly, and I will say that every time. Any action that we do is peaceful, positive and nonviolent, that I address individual police officers all the time to tell them exactly that, that we do support their mission. And that, that's the bottom line. We are not against the enforcement. We are for fair, even enforcement. As we have seen it for the last decade, that's only changed in the last two months. Transistor radios.
Sorry, I'm making notes as I go along here, so I only have so many hands. Thanks for the clarification. It actually makes sense that even the transistor radio doesn't, I don't know what that rule means that, that part that Konami shared with us. I don't know what that means if it doesn't mean that. But, but again, whenever you're talking about enforcement, it's a, it's a slippery slope if you start telling people how to enforce rules in a way that treats people differently. And that's, that's a concern that I can share as a way of sharing with you our support for the enforcement folks, as I hear you saying that you do too, because there are concerns and okay, well then, then we're in heated agreement and I'm glad to hear that.
What, what we would like is a predictable, non-random, not capricious level of enforcement. And what we're getting is very unpredictable, very capricious and quite random.
Okay, well, I might not apply any of those adjectives to the situations as they unfold and, and certainly I am not present in the park to see a lot of them. And from, from prior experience, I know better than to make judgments on, on information that I, you know, that I don't witness. So I defer on some of those things and go back to first principles, which I've explained and I don't need to go back and forth on. So thanks for your clarification. That's helpful. And it's also helpful to know that we agree on some things like the need for enforcement. Thanks.
Thank you. And I want to move on to Max from city council. If you have any updates, please let us know. And you have any comment about the suggestion, most likely for sound down for now, you would like to know, so.
Yeah, so I can start with updates. I mean, very brief. Me and the council member, we were able to meet with the borough commissioner in parks, so not the commissioner of all of parks, but the commissioner for Manhattan specifically. And so, yeah, you know, and it's, you know, it took, again, it was kind of similar to our meeting with the, with the sixth precinct in that they obviously have their reservations, but you know, they're open to meeting, you know, like we, you know, they, if they'll, they'll come, they'll bring their pet people, you know, the kind of, and again, part of why, again, having a meeting is so vital now is because again, they have their perspective, which is different than the sixth precinct's perspective, which is different from your perspective. And so again, you know, everyone clearly has their own understanding of what's happening from their perspective and, you know, the only way to kind of even to, the only way to get a solution is to everyone at least be on the same page, which clearly, you know, I just, I get, having talked to you, the precinct, the parks, I think everyone's on a different page about what's happening. And so, yeah, again, and so now I think now it's finally, you know, the council member, you know, and I think, you know, we're gonna try and figure this out, get something scheduled, try and get the sixth precinct on board, kind of confirm that. And then, yeah, hopefully we could have something in the next month or so, you know, a meeting to really get this going. And then, you know, again, I wish, I wish we could have had this meeting a month ago. You know, it's getting, you know, that, you know, we get, you know, we're, we're trying to get them to agree. It's just, you know, we can only do so much in, in getting them and getting them to actually show up. And then let's see what else. Yeah, we also, you know, you know, we told them that Um and then let's see what else, yeah, we also, you know, you know, we told them that, I think, yeah, they're, they're opening, they're open to hearing recommendations for changing park rules, so again, whether that means they'll actually listen to them or actually seriously consider it, but you know, again, you know, so once, at least for the vending, you know, once all, all the, the vendors, I know, once you get together and have your recommendations, we can kind of get rolling on that. And then, yeah, in terms of the proposals, you know, I think the council member, you know, we still have the same concerns that we had in the past that Mark brought up with, with the, the sound permitting. I, I will look into how it works in the subway, because I didn't know about the eighty-five, I knew that there, I didn't know about the eighty-five decibel rule in the subway and see how they enforce that, and if there are, maybe in transit police, if they have some kind of uh decibel reader, you have to see, you know, Kam, you mentioned that, so I, that is interesting, and I will look into that. I think maybe we're thinking more along, and this is just an idea, and you know, what your thoughts are, because again, I think the decibel rule would be a very hard, I think, yeah, it's even our concerns aside, and then there's the political side of things of like actually getting the speaker, and I get the Speaker of the Council to let it move through and, and get, get a hearing and get it, be brought to a vote, is definitely challenging, aside from the concerns that, that we have. Um yeah, maybe a bill that's more focused on changing the pricing to, to make it a more kind of affordable permitting option. That's just an idea I wanted to, and I, I don't know what the numbers would be, I don't know if in a bill we would even have numbers to begin with, or just kind of create a more affordable permitting option, but it's an idea I wanted to run by you.
Uh so I guess my question is, uh what was the name of the Manhattan Park Commissioner you met?
Yeah, so his name is Anthony Perez.
Anthony, okay. And you met this person how long ago?
Uh last, I don't remember the exact, I think Thursday or Friday.
Okay. So last week?
Yeah.
Okay. And you said, so like, uh, so this person is a Manhattan Park Commissioner, so this person writes the park rules of the Manhattan Parks or?
Uh, so yeah, so it's still, yeah, it's still the, you know, the, the Commissioner of all the, the whole agency, you know, and they write, they write the rule, but the Parks Commissioner oversees Pep in Manhattan, you know, worked with the Commissioner. Uh you know, yeah, any meeting we'd have, he'd be the one who would probably be part of that conversation.
Okay, do you think this person can join this meeting for the future, or like you should be the person?
We can ask, I think, yeah, I think they're hesitant, I think they also want, I think, I think they're hesitant about joining one of these meetings. Um I think, and again, I'm trying to remember, yeah, I, I think they prefer like a more just like open meeting with like, I think, yeah, I think they don't wanna join a me, I think they're scared of joining a meeting and getting like yelled at, or you know, like, I think they want a more neutral ground meeting where everyone can be on, 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 on kind of a equal ground, I think, yeah, they just have their concerns, or especially or about, again, and I, I don't, I don't wanna like put that, put those words in their mouth, if that's not exactly how they're feeling, that's just what I was getting, but again, they, yeah, I think they're, they're hesitant about it, I think they prefer more, yeah, the kind of neutral ground meeting.
So, okay. That's good. Um and also, the, for the affordable, affordable permit things, uh I just wanna speak my experience from the last summer, because uh I had a little bit of a conversation with Ian one, right, and I really do think what the, what the lawmakers think affordable is not affordable, affordable for basket at all, like, um sorry, like, I can't bring up the specific number, but like, we had a communication over the email because he suggested something about the, like a permit fee and everything, and like, their suggestion was not affordable at all. And another thing I want to emphasize is, if New York City takes advantage of street artists so often for free, we should be allowed to perform for free, that's our just demand, just letting you know. And like, I understand like why permit comes to the proposal and suggestions, but I'm just saying that after going through that conversation, like, we, I, I really don't think, uh like, what we think affordable is never affordable, and frankly, if city does that, like the things they, they, like the thing they did to me, we, we should allow to perform for free, um just letting you know. So, yeah, that's why we are more seeking for the modified park rules rather than the permit system, if that makes sense.
No, that, that does make sense, um and I totally hear you guys, and, yeah, and I wish I had like, oh, like like the, the solution that, you know, appeases everyone and solves everything, and you know, we're, we're brainstorming, we're thinking about it. Um but, yeah, you know, but I totally hear you.
Great. Thanks. And did you mention, like, you, you have another meeting coming up with this Manhattan Per Commissioner?
Oh, we don't have another meeting, but you know, if there's, you know, there, there, if we were to do like, you know, we, we still wanna do a, a public meeting where we can get you, we can get community members, NYPD, the parks, and now, we just have parks that they, they, they would come to that meeting and bring the Commissioner, bring Pep. So, yeah, that was, uh, yeah, a lot of the meeting was just to kind of get them to confirm that they would show up to, to a public meeting.
Right, because as I said, you know, like, our interest right now is how to bring this proposal to the next level, and I guess what I'm hearing is everyone coming to the same table rather than like, like small meetings many times. So, do you have any idea how would that be happening? Or like, general like idea of like, I don't know who's orchestrating it, or do you know what I mean?
Um, yeah, yeah, I think.
I think we need to make it happen, we should make it happen, so.
Yeah, so I think now, again, it's, now we want, we're trying to kind of reconfirm with the sixth precinct, because again, like I mentioned, that, you know, we spoke to them a month ago, so now it's just to get them back on board and make sure they're on board. And then finding, yeah, finding the right venue, uh whether it's, you know, our office hosting it, uh or, you know, some, you know, other group, um. Yeah, so I think that, then that, that's kind of our next step, which now, you know, we can start working on, on our end to, to confirm, yeah, you know, where, where the meeting would be.
Okay. Um, I know it's very difficult probably, but like, if it's possible, I wanna know the general like timeline, like around by when that would be happening, you know, like, I don't wanna wait until, for example, like, I don't know, next year, next, next.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, again, I think now, like, you know, let, let's, yeah, I wanna try and get this done in the next, you know, month. Um and get, get something on the books, uh, so, yeah, I'm gonna talk with the count, you know, my meeting with the council member to go over everything I've been working on just in our offices in general tomorrow, so we can go over this and yes, try and get a, a more finalized timeline.
Sounds great. So, hoping in October, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. All right, I think pretty much it. So the next step would be that possible large meeting in October, hopefully.
Yeah, and then I would say, yeah, once, yeah, once the vendors can get their recommendations to, you know,
Right.
together, then, yeah, and we can get working on that as soon as, yeah, that's, that's putting that down.
Okay, that's good. Thank you. Uh if you guys have any questions to each other, please let us know.
Yeah, Kanami, I, I do think it's helpful to understand the context of each of these regulations and meet with somebody who can inform me about the, the other side of each of these. So that, that'll help you successfully navigate that meeting when everybody comes together.
I'm sorry, who's speaking? I'm so sorry, who's speaking?
Uh Trevor is speaking.
This is Trevor.
Sorry, Trevor, you're off camera, so I don't, so the little yellow light doesn't come on, so trying to take good notes, thanks, sorry to interrupt.
This, this is, this is me, um sorry, I, I, as I said, I'm not looking my best, but um the uh uh, yeah, I just, uh, I think it would just would be wise to, to try and meet somebody who understands the regulations on the other side so that you can successfully navigate the middle ground. Um that, that maybe, that will do people as opposed to discovering them at the big meeting and then trying to decide, you know, on the fly what the middle ground might be. Um so, uh, before that meeting, I, I suggest you kind of, uh, see if there's somebody that can help engage you and navigate the regulations.
Meeting myself. I guess also, I guess one thing I, I do actually do wanna add, just to kind of on the legislative side, because, you know, one thing I, I really do wanna highlight is that, you know, well, because what we, what we don't want to happen is, you know, let's say, let's say, you know, we introduce this, uh, you know, like the, the no permitting rule, because we don't, you know, we don't want, we, we don't wanna introduce a bill that doesn't go anywhere, and then nothing happens, because I think what people don't, and again, I wanna give a kind of an explanation of the, the legislative process for how it works. Kind of explain, you know, the hurdle, because basically, so a bill is introduced, it then has to get a hearing, and the, the hearing is only happens if the Speaker of the Council and the Chair, that it goes to a hearing in a committee, so this would go to the Parks Committee. So a bill only gets to the hearing if the Speaker of the Council and the Chair of that committee wanted to. And then even it can go through a hearing, and then it only goes, it can have a hearing, but it only even comes to a vote in the Council to actually be passed, if the Speaker wants to bring it to a vote. So if you have a bill that even just, again, just the Speaker dislikes, and you know, then it just gets lost, and, you know, most bills that are introduced in the Council don't actually go anywhere, get, most of, I would say, most probably don't even get a hearing because they're just introduced, and if the Speaker or the Chair doesn't want it, they won't go it, you know, it won't go anywhere, and so so many bills just die kind of on arrival, and so I just wanna make sure that any bill we introduce, and I think this is a bill that is a, is a tougher sell for a lot of people, especially someone like, again, I think knowing just the politics of the Council. Um, yeah, so we, we just wanna make sure that that doesn't happen, that we introduce this bill, and then it doesn't go anywhere, and then we're kind of screwed because of, you know, we wasted our solution on, on a bill that's not going anywhere, so I just kind of wanna highlight, you know, it's not just, we're not just saying no because we don't like it, you know, there there's the kind of the politics behind it, we just wanna make sure that, you know, if we're gonna introduce a bill to address the permitting, that is one that can actually has, you know, what we can actually get, get moving, and actually has a chance of making it to a vote.
Yeah, thank you. So that's the process, and it sounds, yes, challenging, but we just gotta do it, what we can do. Step by step, so, but I, I hear you, thank you, thank you so much. Great. Uh Andrew has a question.
Yeah, or, or just a comment, thinking about your uh wanting there to be amplified sound in the park. Um, yeah, I think it's a great advice to think about all the reasons that people wouldn't want that to pass, and what are the, what are the hurdles, uh and what needs to be added to that bill to make sure that it's that, that it passes, or that it, that, yeah, has a shot, um, because I can definitely see not wanting, I, I I imagine there would be very little resistance to you personally, Kanami, for people not wanting you to perform, I think generally what you do is beautiful and everyone can see that, but then you have to deal with, what if you, it starts becoming a trend where like fifty people a day are just bringing their speakers to the park, and you're sitting on a bench listening to someone else's music. Uh that there, I can see a lot of people being like, there should be a rule that we can stop that from happening if we need to. And so, how do you, if you, I did see something in what you, what you had written out that said for like expressive purposes, uh, that, I think that language needs to be very specific, if it's gonna distinguish performers from people just listening to their music, and I also don't know it, where like the boundaries are for like a First Amendment right, or what, like what makes a performer a performer and a listener a listener, and should those people really, should there be a distinguishment between them and the power that they have to use the park in the way they see fit? So that's, that's really, I think that's a, that right there feels like a really difficult hurdle in what what you want to do, uh and I would, I would very much love to see you succeed. And I, so that's just what, something to think about, and I'm available if you wanna talk about how to try to get that done, but that, that feels like your biggest hurdle.
Could I jump in on that for one quick second to, not to repeat or, or challenge what Andrew said, but to add one more factor?
Great.
To these conversations, which is a big place, and it has a lot of trees and a lot of this and a lot of that. There are tiny parks throughout the system, and as I understand it, the park rules essentially apply to all of them. Um and so, um, you know, the, the Conservatory Garden in Central Park and the um, uh, the Septuagessimo Uno Park, which is on West Seventy-first Street, and essentially was created as a public park when somebody's townhouse fell down, are all treated uh the same way, and, and so when you're drafting your proposed rule, you sort of have to get out of the eye, the headspace of what your, your experience is familiar with and contemplate all kinds of other potential parks and other uses, or find a way, as Andrew was saying, of distinguishing one use from another, um so that um you achieve the goal that you're trying to achieve. Um I hope that that's useful.
Yeah, thank you so much. Oh, I'm definitely thinking about it, and but even the current park rules have sections saying like, you know, like this applies only for this park, this, this park. So if that's possible for Washington Square Park, that might be easier instead of like applying something for the entire New York City park, I don't know that yet. But I'm just saying that, like, even the medallion system is like on like a central park and this park and this park. And I don't necessarily agree with it, but like, there are sections of like saying that, like, like not all parks have medallions, only like this park, this park and this park. So I was like, why, it's just very impossible for making something like that section for Washington Square Park for the sound amplifiers, for example, so.
And I can, on that, I can say, I think that, that's where it comes to the difference between like the park rules laid by the Parks Department and the city, and like city legislation, so you know, like, a lot of the vending, medallions vending, that's the parks rules. And I, and as far as I understand it, the, the permitting, that's just city, you know, that's a city policy, and that's just where the difference is, and why, again, harder to, like, again, and, and I have, because we've, I've, I've had this even before, Washington Square Park issues where there is a park, uh who, you know, they want legislation just for their park, and from what I understand, that's just, it's a lot harder and to, yeah, to make a, a law specifically for a specific park, doesn't, I, that doesn't mean it can't be done. I just know, and again, this is something I can, I can look into more, I just know that it's, there have been issues with that in the past with other parks who've wanted laws specifically made for their park.
Okay.
I'll just say, it kind of, it feels like Washington Square Park would be a good candidate for this, though. Just the, the history of performance in that park seems like you'd at least have, there'd be something there, I don't, I really don't know how this all works, but just my impression of the park and its place in the city and the world, it seems like this could be a place where that could happen, but I don't know.
Yeah, uh, actually, Andrew, thank you, uh, we discussed a little bit another day in an in-person meeting, because Washington Square Park is such a it has a personality with performers and artists, right, like, it's historically like, that's the characteristic of Washington Square Park. So, we, we, we're definitely thinking about it, and again, like, I'm, I'm same as you, like, I don't exactly know how to make it documented and on the rules and everything, but like, I think uh, I do see a possibility, I know it's not easy, but um we, we have something to highlight a lot about that specific part.
Yeah, and, and I do agree with that, that, yeah, Washington Square Park is obviously kind of its own thing, which I think makes, again, which is, I think, where there is the leeway here because of what, you know, this isn't, again, some random small park, and you know, maybe that is something we can work on.
Okay. Thank you. Great, uh, anything from anyone? We have like Okay, thank you, Robert.
Well, just expanding on what Kanami mentioned, the park rules for expressive matter vendors differentiate four different parks with very different rules than the other parks. The medallions are only in Union Square Park, Battery Park, Central Park, and on the High Line. They're not in any other park, and it was totally arbitrary how they chose those parks. It actually has to do with the fact that they have very powerful conservancies that demanded that. So obviously, from the Parks Department's legal division's own viewpoint, the rules do not have to be identical in every single park.
Great, yeah, thank you, Robert. Um, so I think we're gonna close the meeting for today, and hopefully by the next meeting, uh, what I want is, I think from Max, if it's possible, uh, we would like to know the large-scale public meeting date, um possibly happening in October. Um and also from the art vendors in general, I want you guys to discuss the suggestions so that, uh, you know, like, we have a meeting something like this, but more focused on the art vendors rules. Uh and then we're gonna hear the comments and updates and suggestions from uh each organization, uh just like we did today. Uh, does that sounds good, everyone? Great. Great. Okay, thank you so much for your time, and I'm gonna send the information again, but, uh, two weeks from now, on September twenty-seventh, uh, we're gonna have this again. Uh, I think that's gonna be one hour, again, uh, I'm not gonna make it ninety minutes. So, great, thank you so much, guys. Have a good day.
Thank you, Kanami.
Thank you. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, good night, good afternoon.